To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and amicable with liberty and justice for all. Just a reminder, if you're tuning in on live through the Teams, the Teams is recorded. So if you participate, you're giving permission to be recorded. And welcome back, Council and everyone. Nice to see you all in person.
Yeah.
And all of you way back there. All right, we'll get started with approval of minutes first. Can I have approval of the June 9 regular meeting minutes, the June 17 special meeting minutes, and the June 23 regular meeting minutes?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
It's gonna go by quickly now.
Do you need to change?
It's gonna say it was five minutes.
First item on the agenda is the Plan Commission appointment. As you all know, Marty Easterbon stepped off of the Plan Commission. And his seat was a Democrat position appointed by Town Council President. We did have someone submit a letter of interest for that position. That person has been confirmed as Democrat, and that's Andy Strati. So I'd like to go ahead and appoint Andy to replace Marty for the remainder of Marty's term.
And this is just for the Plan Commission?
Yes, and it's a council president one, so we don't have to motion for it. And then I know, it's not on here, but we do have Marty also stepped off the MCEDC Board. So we're asking Karen to extend the deadline for getting letters of interest for that. You might want to put that out on social media wherever we can. Bill had submitted a letter of interest, but the MCEDC bylaws do not let an elected official sit on their board. So we will have to appoint someone who's not elected. And hopefully we'll get some letters of interest.
And that's, you don't have to be a Republican or Democrat, right?
No, no. Can be anybody. That's all right. Do you want to put a deadline? We're at the 14th. Do you want to do it by like the first meeting in August? Would that work? Okay. In the meantime, Jerry Travis let me know that if we want to send a rep like Jonathan to their next board meeting, and we don't have someone appointed by then, that one of us is welcome to listen in. We don't have voting authority until this body appoints someone, but they didn't want us to be out of the loop or anything like that, so. Next on the agenda is the handicap parking request on Winfield. Jonathan, do you want to fill us in on that?
Sure, we received a request to add a handicap parking spot on the south side of Winfield Street. It would be across from the home at 204 Winfield. There's no parking there on the north side where the resident lives. But they had requested that it be made available to them on the south side of the street there. The nearest property owner is 203 Winfield. And so if you go 30 feet from the curb, or from the intersection, it would be basically in front of the house there at 203 Winfield. I did talk to them, and they were fine with the change and understood the situation with the neighbor and didn't have an issue with it at all. Wayne and Bob both reviewed as well and were in favor of it and said, in the past, when we've had a resident in a situation like this, we've generally been willing to make that change for them. I'm assuming Jim will need to do it by ordinance, but just wanted to get a motion to move forward with it maybe tonight, and then we would follow up with the change in the ordinance so it could be enforced.
Jonathan, I think that the last time that we have had come up, the ordinance stated that it would remain handicapped until that person no longer needed it.
And we can do that here again, yeah, that'd be fine.
And that was also on Winfield Street, but it's been...
Yeah. And when it was still on council back then?
Yeah, 10 years back, 12 years.
Yeah.
Jim, if that's the case, if we just want to make a temporary change, do we still want to change that in the parking schedule?
If you're gonna do a temporary one, you probably can get by without it. How temporary is it gonna be?
As long as she lives there, I don't know. I would assume.
The last one was probably four or five years.
You know, I can't remember the last time. We just did a little short amendment, didn't we?
I think so.
This one that Sally's talking about, I think that was before I was here. I'm not sure how you guys handled it.
It was up on... The other one was, it was the other corner.
To make sure it's enforceable, you probably do a short amendment.
Okay.
And these people, the requesting, have been there 30 years anyway, so they're gonna be there a while. So this is, this is the new house, it's all, you know, the house that happened next to me on the corner.
Oh, on that one, okay, right behind.
Yeah, corner of Plymouth.
I was wondering about the other one, because they had their own private right there.
So do I have a motion to approve authorizing Jonathan to move forward with creating the amended ordinance?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, then Jonathan, you want me just to go ahead and draft that and put it down to you?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have Regional Stellar Plan Update. Not a lot has changed since the last meeting. The Crosswoods team has a meeting this coming Thursday. Basic status of each other on the projects, where they're at. Probably the project most affecting Culver at this point is the message board project. I think I told you guys, we applied for the COVID grant, received that, so that project is underway. And our location would be out there by the school. Any other updates for regional?
No.
So we'll move to Stellar Plan Update with Jonathan.
See here, Bob and I met with reps from Troyer Group, Culver Community Schools, and Thomas Excavating and Welding. We did a walkthrough and the punch list at Cavalier Park. One thing that came up was setting public hours for the park and there, it is... It remains Culver Community School property with a recreational easement on it. We didn't work out the times ahead of time, and Karen's asked for 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily, which I don't have any issues with. It's mainly about wind a lock, the restroom, more than anything, so. We'll proceed with that. The only concern really that I had after the walkthrough is just the timing of the landscaping and seeding, with things being a little behind. They just kind of finished that in July. Obviously, we had some really hot weather as that went down and don't expect it to do incredibly well, but we mentioned that with Thomas, and their approach was just to recommend that we move forward with it, come back and reseed in the fall when it be a little cooler, if there's any spots that are kind of patchy. So that's the plan there. One thing we dropped off from that project, from the original quote, was a sign. The original sign design was very nice, but also very expensive. And in the interest of budget, we left that out, knowing that we would need to put some sort of sign there in the future. And what we came up with was, there are some existing signs around the high school that are a lot less expensive, wanted to match that with just basically Cavalier Park. I think the logos of the town, the park, Culver Community Schools, and Oprah, noting that it was a stellar funded project and the hours. I've got a quote from that from Van Adco to match those existing ones for $1,200. Request a motion to approve that or any discussion on it?
I'll make a motion to approve that. If you'll tell me the hours again.
5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
5:00 a.m.?
Yes.
I'll send another motion.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have a proposed contract addendum from Troyer Group, and that's for the State Road 10 sidewalk, sidewalks project. It's basically kind of moving some funds around. From the original engineering agreement we signed with them a couple of years ago, the total will decrease by $2,900 with the addendum. But they're shifting some funds that had been originally budgeted in there for right-of-way engineering to preliminary engineering and reducing the overall cost by $2,900. So I would ask for a motion to approve the contract addendum with Troyer Group.
So moved, second.
I have to abstain, but I'll call for the vote.
Is that answer the total of a lot of $29,000 now?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
$29,923.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We got somebody waiting here.
Was that Merchant Sally? Was that Merchant Sally doing those? Okay.
Yep.
I just write down though.
Last stellar item is just at the Beach Lodge. We're awaiting on the donor tree. I talked to Amber today. It sounds like they have it in stock now, but like we mentioned with Cavalier Park, they're recommending that they hold on to it until September and plan it then. So I think it'll do a little better in September. I don't have an issue with that. Hopefully we'll work out, we have an invoice for basically everything at Cavalier Park, at the Beach Lodge, to wrap everything up. Held off on approving it, waiting on, again, that information on the donor tree, and then the lock system, and that came in Thursday. Catch up with Rich, so I don't know. So we had a couple of small items there, but they have sent in the last invoice for the Beach Lodge. So I think it with you at some point, and we can see what, if everything's been completed to satisfaction or not. Sounds good. So that's all I have for stellar update.
All right, we'll go on to Town Managers' Report.
Jenny and I and Jim Clevenger and Buzz Chrome met with NIPSCO legal and PR staff last week on our municipal utility project. We had a discussion with them. I don't think there was a lot of interest in pursuing it on their end. We did follow up with some emails with Buzz and some legal contacts that he has, that there may be an opportunity for us to continue to pursue it. But at the first meeting, NIPSCO was not particularly excited about the opportunity, I don't think. Anything you'd add to that, Jenny?
No, we just would like to have an executive meeting with the council before the next regular meeting, because we're gonna have a couple more meetings. We want to be able to update you on where we're at. But Jim has told us that we can do that in executive session because it involves possible acquisition of the utility. So if it's possible, we'd like to do it before the next regular meeting. Jim would attend either on Teams or in person, but we just want to make sure you guys are up to date. And we'll also fill you in on how this follow-up conversation goes. So does that work for you guys, like a 5 o'clock executive, maybe?
2:00 from the night.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. We could possibly, you think we could do 5:30, Jonathan and Jim? For that executive, do you want a good hour, Jim?
Well, you know, a lot's gonna depend, I suppose, on what we hear tomorrow. I think you can do it, though, in an hour.
Okay.
And I certainly would plan to be there. I think what needs to be said, we need to, you know, talk about it and make sure everybody knows what's going on.
Okay. We can extend this table a little further out for another person at it. So 5:30 then, leave an hour? Okay. Thanks, you guys.
This is Jim Clevenger interrupting, and Karen, did you get the information from Jonathan for the executive session notice? And are you gonna send that out, or do you want me to?
I can take care of it.
Okay, I think I cited the statute for Jonathan if you need it.
Okay, I'll get him.
Okay, great, thanks.
Next up, I have a quote from EJP that Bob got for us for the remaining meters and radio units for switching all water meters over to radio read units. It's a mix of, again, some meters that would just be used for replacements, some that, mostly radio units, I think, are what was on that. But it was 175 different units of different types, and the total was $30,350. And that's a split between water and sewer.
You said it's a split between water and sewer?
Actually, it would probably come out of sewer, because that was more functional.
Okay.
And again, this would be enough to, I believe, update all of our, all of our meters to the radio read.
Come on, Alex.
It's not fun to solve an update.
Yeah, they're both solid, but it's a little bit more, so.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think at the last meeting, I mentioned working on paving list for Community Crossings Grant, and then I think right about that time, they came out and said those are delayed, possibly postponed until next year. We'll see, just due to gas tax funding being limited this year. So we'll hold off on doing anything with that list for now. But from this year's list, we did get our invoice from EMB Paving. And as they're here doing our paving list, we typically provide a patch list once they're here and keep it up to date. So they did a total of 10 patches for us while they were here. One was for the fire department, the other nine were all from water leaks or repairs and would come out of the water fund. And again, asked for a motion to approve the invoice from EMB Paving for $12,200.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we received notice that the governor extended the prohibition on utilities disconnects. And I guess it's just, was it on late fees as well, Karen, or just disconnects?
On late fees.
Okay, so asking the council, and we had extended ours out until July, but now asking just that we follow what the state recommendation or requirements are and extend our moratorium on late fees and utility disconnects until August 14th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And our hiring committee for the EMS position met last week, and we did a couple interviews today. We'll have another one sometime next week. And we'll be following up with checking references, things like that. And we hope to make a recommendation, maybe at the next council meeting, the last one in July, or the first one in August at the latest. So Bill and Sally have been serving on that. So we'll keep moving forward with that. On the trash and recycling contract, Jim, I'll defer to your recommendation here. We had kind of two options. They sent us basically just an extension of our current contract with the new price on it. We could do that for another 30 days if we need to. Or if you're comfortable with the language and the revised version, I'd ask for approval of that tonight if you're comfortable with it.
Yes, you didn't get my email, apparently. I dropped you this afternoon saying I was comfortable with the revision. I had some added things. This new contract, probably was always the case that Republic could refuse certain waste, if they found it, I assume. Whatever the case might be. And obviously, man, the new contract says if we refuse it in town, you deal with it. Well, if they're not gonna be able to deal with it, we sure can't deal. And I don't know whether in our ordinance establishing the requirement that the homeowners pay share of this contract, if there's language in there about them taking responsibility for waste that's not accepted by Republic Services. If there's not, or if there's not a separate ordinance somewhere to do that, we may want to consider adding or doing something so that we put that back on the homeowner if there's, if there's gonna be waste that's excluded under the contract.
All right, with that note, I'd ask for a motion to approve the new trash and recycling contract with Republic Services.
Do you have the...
Yeah, so I'm not, we're not changing the public rate at all tonight, but right, I think it went from 14... 14.09 to $15 even, I believe that's the change.
That's correct, it's $15.
Thanks.
But it's not, that's just what we're paying, not what the...
For now.
Public's the same?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, well, okay.
Before we approve the contract, I mean, Jim, do you want to make that change to the contract or negotiate that before we approve this one and just do a temporary extension?
Well, I pointed that out initially with some of my other comments that Republic went ahead and revised and made some corrections on. And I'm guessing that they're not interested in modifying that part because those, the waste provisions were still in this contract.
I didn't reread it again, Jim, but after we sent, I sent your notes to them basically, and they made some changes, our account representative basically said on that section, their biggest concern is if it gets rejected from the landfill, they want us to assist them and as much as we can in figuring out where it actually came from so that they can...
And Jonathan, they did make all those revisions.
Okay.
You know, if they don't discover it and they have to deal with it, they'll, they'll get rid of it. But if they get charged a higher fee because of the hazardous nature of the waste, then they're looking for us to re... on that. And they have language in the, in the contract that says they'll make, they'll assist in trying to determine, you know, the source of excluded waste. So it seemed to me that, you know, they were trying to accommodate us in, to some... And I don't... Know what else we could probably do under the circumstances, other than it's probably not going to be something that's gonna come up. I'm not sure what, what would constitute excluded waste, but it's, it seems to be pretty extraordinary.
Okay. We're second in the motion to approve the contract. Who was the first? Was it Sally? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My last item is special event requests for, I think there's three things. A library-sponsored cemetery walk that would be on September 19th. Sidewalk sales, which would close Main Street from Thursday evening, July 23rd until July 26th. And a park and Lake Scavenger Hunt on July 25th. Take a motion for all three, or one at a time, however you want to do it.
I'd like a motion to approve all three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Jonathan. Any questions for Jonathan, you guys? All right. Next, we'll go to Department head reports. I'm gonna skip EMS, assuming there's no report there. Ken, are you on the call tonight for fire?
No, you got, you got second best Pete here tonight.
Hi, Pete.
Hello, hey, I appreciate you letting me speak for Ken. He's out of town for a few days. Just a very few things we got on the docket today. I'd like to express to the Town and Town Council is very pleased with the patch that EMB did at the station, our parking lot before that. I think it was a little subpar, but it looks very nice now and very functional. Also, in that same vein, I'd like to thank Bob and his crew at the Street Department for helping us replace the bell at the fire station on our honor wall. The hand-hewn timbers finally gave up the ghost, and we had to replace them, and quite the heavy project. And they were very, very good at their, their help and got it up very fast. We also voted as a department in lieu of the Fire Fest. It's not a huge fundraiser for us every year, but we like, we voted to hold a raffle in place of that event, just to get us through the year. So that's, you know, just in every place of our Fire Fest, we're just trying to maybe replace some funds. And last but not least, the latest on the aerial ladder truck is, they've got graphics on it now. They've done painting and installing some doors. Best guess right now, it's gonna be probably late in the month of August. So it's, it's still going, but as everything else in this environment, things are just maybe a little slower than usual. That's all I had.
Thanks, Pete. Any questions?
Question on the raffle, are there any restrictions on doing that? Is it the county departments, or how does that work?
They may have to apply for, what do you call it?
Permit?
Yeah, I think Indiana requires, should we get that?
If you're not, it may require if you're not a, not a proper organization. I just want to make sure we're...
Yeah.
...able to gain on that. So I support the idea. That's just on the fire department's question. Yes.
Yeah, Pete, let us know if you need it. Let me know if you need any help navigating that.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Pete. Thanks for filling in for Ken. Wayne, I think you're on two?
Hello?
Hi, Wayne.
How's it going? I don't, I don't currently work.
Okay.
Anything we're working on, pretty much. Yeah, busy weekend over the fourth, a lot of people here.
How's it go? We'll get that reported. Thanks, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Well, that was clear as mud. Amber, are you on the call for the park?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi.
Hello. Yeah, nothing really to report. Had our second concert over the past weekend. It went really well. So yeah, thanks to everybody coming out and supporting those, but yeah, nothing other than that.
Okay. Any questions for Amber or Wayne, you guys? I keep forgetting to ask. I'm used to the Zoom calls too. All right, anything else? Bob, are you on the call?
I am. I have nothing for you this evening.
All right, thanks, Bob. Boards and commissions, is anyone on the call for the Plan Commission or VCA?
Pete Peterson's off the Plan Commission, really nothing to report. We plan on holding our next meeting this month. Same, I guess, establishment, you guys are doing one tonight, so hopefully that'll go off without a hitch.
Okay, thanks, Pete. Any report from the CRC?
Just that our next meeting is Monday, the 20th, 5:00 p.m. At this time scheduled for here at the library, more than 10 minutes into this.
Is anyone on the call for the Tree Commission? Sounds like we're committed to Clark's report.
I have several claims over $1,500 for your approval. As Jonathan mentioned earlier, actually, I guess we won't have to use the EMB paving one for $1,200. Travelers R and D is the workers' compensation for the fire department, and that's $1,998. Then there's Thomas Excavating for $31,836.10. And a second one for Thomas for $35,446.37. One was from May, I believe, and the other from June. And then finally, Live Oak Electric, $2,351.38 for some repairs at the park.
Could we approve the 15,000?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then can I get the approval for the May financial reports?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Bill, I do have June ready, so...
You do have June ready?
The sidewalk program has been roller coaster this year. We had another sidewalk applicant withdraw their application, which freed up a little bit more money. And I had another, I have another applicant on the waiting list. They put in for a curb and sidewalk project, which would be the two separate... Um, they put into a curb and sidewalk projects, which would be the two separate, separated type of outlaw. Um, we have enough money to do the sidewalk program, uh, the sidewalk, and they were okay just doing that portion of the project. Um, and so that project would be eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Um, and we can do that without going over the twelve thousand we budgeted. So if I could just get approval for that.
Question on the turn, what would be the initial, not necessarily do both? If we were to supplement the sidewalk?
I don't know if I have that information. I don't have that. I think I deleted it because I was just, I know it would put us in favor. It seems to be, it'd be probably another eight hundred dollars. But they were fine with just the one.
Motion to approve?
Jonathan, this is Russ Mason.
Yes?
Yeah. I, I think Bob needs to check that sidewalk that went in on the corner of College and Forest Place. I don't think there's a handicap access to that, to that sidewalk.
You're correct, Russ. There was an issue there and, and they're working on it. They're getting it fixed.
Oh, thank you, Jonathan.
Yep.
Uh, was there a motion to approve the new sidewalk? I think Billy, you send the. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, the town, my gosh, they'll start on Thursday. I got the map out earlier this evening. Um, maps will be available around town and we're doing this, uh, in conjunction with the alliance called the State Sales. Um, I did put a note on there just to keep in mind social distancing, wear a mat, you know, be respectful, wear masks if it's a mask too and keep it in the same size, I think. So hopefully we can, um, do our part. Uh, cleanup day is scheduled, still scheduled for July twenty-fifth. Um, let's see, the aid medical trust, uh, there, since we're part of the trust, they do have a board of trustees and they are currently, um, in the process of electing a trustee member. There was just one nomination and that was for Warsaw Mayor Joe Bowmer. And, um, so they're requesting about be completed by the council plan on behalf of the council for that, um, trustee position. So if I could just have a motion to, uh, approve Jimmy basically signing the ballot and submitting it, that would be.
All in favor?
Finally, I'm getting into Jonathan's stuff. I've got ways to go though. Um, I'd like to schedule a work session if possible, uh, to discuss the salary ordinance. I'd really like to talk the salary ordinance and get that down first for once and then, and then hit the budget. So if we could, uh, do a salary ordinance session the week of August second and then review budgets, um, Monday and Tuesday, the week of August tenth. I don't, I don't anticipate a ton of change on budgets, just due to the different factors that we have going on. And I should get information out to all of you by Thursday.
Okay.
Can you anticipate a reduction in the revenue?
Yeah, there's a reduction, yeah. So I'm not anticipating budgets or anything like that much, is what I was trying to say. But I also, I think I probably had to also get some guidance from you.
Okay, so August second, that week of work session. Do you guys want to do whatever that Tuesday is, just to keep it on our normal? Uh, five o'clock type of thing? Okay. Does that work for you, Karen?
I mean, Monday, August tenth, if we could do another five o'clock.
Okay.
And then, um, then Tuesday, I would love to give everyone.
Okay. So both sessions on tenth and eleventh.
And then we have the regular meeting.
Does that work for you guys? All right.
I will get notice this out and it was included.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Karen. Uh, attorney's report, Jim?
Uh, yeah, it's just one thing and it's, uh, summary of the email that I sent to the council last Thursday concerning our four fifteen Lakeshore lean foreclosure. The attorney for Mr. Van Hawk, uh, and the Twenty Seven Group Inc. and all of the other plaintiffs, uh, that gave us tort claim notice on four fifteen Lakeshore and filed suit six fourteen College Avenue, uh, withdrew her appearance. I, I think what prompted that probably was that we served her with service for the Twenty Seven Group Inc. Because I, we have not been able to serve the resident agent because the corporation is, uh, administratively dissolved. The registered agent doesn't, isn't there, doesn't accept service. Uh, so, um, we're back to a publication notice on the Twenty Seven Group Inc. I've asked Jonathan to post, uh, no, a notice, uh, at the site. And, uh, so we'll have to wait a little while while that, uh, circulates through the, uh, newspapers, um, before we can proceed with. At this point, I had a motion for default, ready to proceed. But in any event, uh, more, uh, shell games, uh, being played by our friend and, uh, we'll keep, we'll keep after them. And if any of you have any questions, feel free to contact me and, uh, we'll, we'll go from there. That's all.
Thank you, Jim. Um, I'm assuming there's no one on the call on that end for utility shut off or ordinance violation. So we'll move on to citizen input. We'll start with the citizen input here in the room. Okay. Any citizen input on the phone call? All right. We'll go on to council issues. Rich, council issues.
Um, question for Karen. I understand the tree board has some members from town for the supplemental staffing on the Fourth of July.
That's what I understand, yes.
Public information. We just wanted to discuss appreciation obtained for that.
Yeah. Thank you, Rich. Um, Sally, any council issues?
I do not have any.
All right. Bill, any council issues? Bill? All right. I have a couple really quick ones.
Might have a message in the chat box.
Oh, okay. Yeah, check that out. We'll work. Um, so I, I think I forwarded you guys an email from the academies about their plan for opening up, bringing students back. Um, I wanted to let you know the comment on from over there called. And, um, a- as you're aware, they're testing students as they arrive and faculty and staff. They have a number of machines to do the testing and that, um, particular type of machine gives results right away and so. And I had asked the comment, you know, are these expensive machines? What's, what's the type of investment? And he said, they're not really that expensive as you would guess, but that each test has an associated cost. And of course, if you're testing eight hundred students, that would add up. Um, and so I expressed an interest in finding out more information about that. And that we would want to invest in a machine to test our employees. Um, you do have to be certified to test and you have to be associated with like a, uh, a clinic or a center. And I don't know if our EMS could service that. I thought we'd do a little research and at least look into it. Uh, because it would be one of those cases where if Wayne wanted to test the officers, you know, on a quarterly basis or something, or the EMTs wanted to test, some of the people who work with the public on a regular basis could be easily quickly tested. Um, but like I said, I don't know the cost. I thought I would at least try to get that information and bring it back here.
As an alternative or a plan B on that, we explore as a contractor services. Um, do we have the academy, do they, they're training the staff, they have all the equipment. They probably have a pretty good reach, some of the academies, the, um, the provider of the services. If they would do it, especially since our EMS and, um, wiring needs all these.
Service.
Two events there, um, if they do it on a contracted services or test basis for us.
Yeah, we could definitely ask what that would look like.
After like an interloper agreement, you know, inner.
Yeah. Well, particularly because they're going to have several machines that are constantly operating. And they've already got the certification in the, in the medical center. So, yeah, we'll definitely look into that. I just wondered if that would be of interest to you guys, you know, if, if we should and. Um, and then I had, um, I'm going to forward the information to you. I talked to Karen, um, a couple of weeks ago about getting some information together. You know, we did the utility relief, um, for small businesses. It wasn't real costly to the town to provide some, uh, relief funds for those businesses. And I'm interested in looking at what that would look like if we were to do the same thing for the two schools and perhaps larger businesses like ACPI, maybe Portside Marina, the ones that would not have qualified when we did the small business utility relief. And so Karen provided me a nice spreadsheet. She took like Millers, the schools, some of the bigger businesses, mapped out what their utility costs are for some of the months that we did the small business relief. Um, I thought that if we can afford to and it makes sense that maybe we could consider that for the schools, especially because, uh, as we know, Culver Academies is taking a huge revenue hit. I think the public school is probably going to have a very tight budget, um, considering the state is already talking about funding cuts and that sort of thing. Um, so Karen put together some great data that I thought I forward on you guys to review it. Think about it. We can, you know, put it on the agenda for our next meeting. I didn't want to ask everyone to look at it tonight and make a decision really quickly because I think it's something to think about. Um, I know, you know, the academy stepped up to contribute to our fire truck. Um, and I know they're going through a rough time right now because of, of all of, all of this COVID response. Um, and I'm sure some of these other businesses are just like the smaller businesses were. So, um, thank you, Karen, for putting all of that together. It's a nice thorough bird's eye view. Uh, and I'll just forward you that email or, or have Karen send it back out. And I think. Um, oh, and then I did want to bring out what us, uh, somebody who doesn't live here, but who used to have a student at Culver Academies, uh, belongs to several of the social media pages that the Culver parents are on. Um, and they've expressed concern about whether Culver is safe and bringing their kids back to campus and, uh, that sort of thing. And she had reached out to me and also Bill on, uh, Messenger on social media and had a discussion about, you know, is Culver being safe? And, and for the most part, I feel like if you look up our zip code, we have here a few cases as far as the percentage across the county. Um, but Bill and I kind of talked a bit about encouraging the businesses to encourage wearing masks. Some of the businesses are asking people to wear a mask, some are not. Um, and I don't know if this council, you know, at some point wants to consider mandating it on a local level. Or if right now we should just reach out to the businesses and see if, uh, most of them are seeing mask wearing. If not, would they be willing to encourage it with signage or, you know, whatever the case may be? I kind of wanted to get thoughts on that here at council. Uh, because I know I'm getting approached about it and I'm sure some of you are as well.
Jenny and I talked about this, like she said, and my thought process was that over the next couple of weeks, we would, each and every one of us, as we own these local businesses, whether it be parking shop, Osborne, Tumiller, just ask the local business managers, would they be, uh, opposed to putting signage up, uh, on their front door that stays, uh, you know, please wear a mask if you're going to enter our establishment. And let the businesses, uh, police the masking. I mean, we're not going to be the mask police. And, you know, it would be up to the business. A customer comes in and doesn't have a mask on, you know, to say something to that person, you know, we're happy to have your business. Would you please go back and put a mask on and just kind of do a.
I, I, I support the initiative. I wonder if we might ask the chamber to do this though. I mean, it's really good. The chamber is in a relationship, I mean, we all have a personal relationship.
Right.
Each of the businesses, but I wonder from a more organized perspective, if we ask the chamber to take that on and to, um, communicate that to the businesses. And then perhaps as the chamber.
Or in addition to, yeah.
Back to us, it's a just a recommendation.
Yeah.
I'd say the formalized. I, I support it. I think we need to not become lax.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's fine. I mean, I just think, because, you know, look, we're getting ready to, like, the academy's coming back, schools are coming back. We got another big holiday coming up with Labor Day where we're going to have influx of people. And we just saw what influx of people did here over, uh, Fourth of July and, you know, we're right now in really an incubation period to see what happens after everyone is here. So. Jenny and I thought this would be something to, you know, talk about and bring up and look at in the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we could ask the chamber to see if they might want to put some messaging out, talk to the business owners. Might be a good time for us to put a message out to the public too. It's been a while. We could go by the, you know, explain that phase five is coming up. I think they extended phase four into a four point five. Remind people that, um, masks would be appreciated and.
I think that's up this Friday, this seventh.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe we put a message out on Friday, you know, explaining what phase five means and what the concerns are. And the county has definitely seen an uptick.
We wouldn't be asking these, uh, businesses to provide masks. It'd be up to the individual. We'd back out to the regular or whatever, you mask, you know, pull it out of the first.
Yeah, I mean, it, I see it in some stores, I see a lot of people with it on and then in others, no one. I guess it just depends on where you're at and, um, but, and we do have a lot of out of town people that come to town on the weekends, obviously.
I've heard, I mean, not from a model of those people, but I've heard of a number of them, but they're surprised when they come to town and they're wearing masks. And so they don't do it. I mean, coming from Indianapolis, coming from Chicago and where the more, like, familiar people wearing masks in, in public areas. And it's surprising that you don't see it here until they don't do it here.
And what we're trying to do right now to be proactive, uh, reactive, along with the chamber, and I think it's something that benefits all of us.
Yeah, I was in Indianapolis over the weekend and I, I saw a lot of masks. One store I was in, I don't think I saw anyone without one. So I thought that was really interesting. Okay. Anything else, you guys?
I just got one other thing I'd like to mention. I'd like to thank Colleen Cheese here tonight. It's over our name, but I want to thank the library and Colleen for letting me choose it through.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot easier to spread out in here. Anything else from the online group? Jonathan, you saw something?
Yeah. Kevin is representing us on one of the, um, Marshall County Stella, housing there.
Okay.
Hi, guys. Um, the housing committee has been continuing to meet. And the main thing we're looking at is the, um, OOR program, which is owner occupied renovations. Uh, we are about to hire a consultant to start running that program. Where it's going to affect Culver is, is we're going to be having a meeting in Culver coming up soon to, um, look for houses and applicants to do this. I think it's something that's time to, you know, get out in the community a little bit on this. The other thing that I thought you guys should know, um, there was some debate at the meeting on how the money should be spent. Uh, there were a couple of representatives that thought it should be divided by community. But the majority basically decided it should be divided by need. So, um, when the applications come in, in the end, they're going to be sorted instead of by community by the most pressing need throughout the county. And, um, we're looking at a lot of probably roofs, um, furnaces, leaking things like that. And critical things that need to be done immediately, but getting, starting to get the word out in Culver and Marshall County that this is coming. So people can be thinking about, um, who they need to contact, might be applicable. Um, the applicants wind up and, and comfortable with making an application. And I know we're going to be talking to Jonathan soon about setting up a place to do this and, and how to get it started. But I thought you guys should be aware that it's, it's moving forward. It's probably going to be a longer term thing. So we will be going through the application process. process, doing those things this fall, but it's unlikely that we'll be able to get, um, far enough along to get the money and get anything done this fall. But everything should be lined up to start projects first thing in the spring.
Okay. Great. Thanks for the update, Kevin.
You're welcome.
I know there's some like, uh, income thresholds that have to be met for that program. So we'll figure out how to communicate that out as well. Can't just be.
Part of the concern is how he is finding the right people, because a lot of the people that would be applicable to this program may not be, um, in, in touch with all the social media and some of the other things. So we kind of, some of it's got to be done word of mouth. We just got to get it out in the community.
Sure, sure. Okay. Um, anything else, you guys? A motion to adjourn the claims?
Someone, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Sign the paperwork and have a good night.
See y'all in two weeks.
See ya.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Jonathan, uh, what you got, what you got going there, fella?
I had to cut these off.
Couldn't find your razor tonight, huh?
Right.
All right. See you later.
See ya. That's harsh. That's harsh.